Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 20, 2011, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next matter is approval of the meeting agenda.
The move?
Moved in second, we approve the meeting agenda and its published format discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter is the adoption of the consent agenda. There are five items on there. I would think we should remove four D. I'd like to discuss that landscaping project a little bit. Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda? Moved in second, we approve the consent agenda with the exception of four D. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried. And, you know, let's, would the council be comfortable holding that so we can have Commissioner Callison come up and address us? And welcome her. We're pleased that Commissioner Jan Callison, who ably represents the city of Edina and other municipalities, is here with us this evening to give us an annual update.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland.
Commissioner Callison, welcome.
Well, it's my pleasure to be here, members of the city council, staff, and the mayor. I appreciate, I was gonna say, I appreciate some having your busy agenda, but it's not quite so busy tonight.
No.
I'm still appreciative, and I look forward to this chance each year to give you an update on Hennepin County and listen to your questions or your concerns. I passed out to each of you a Hennepin County fact sheet. You've got at your seat, if people are listening, it's on our website as well. I think it's always interesting to find out more about Hennepin County. This gives you some basic statistics, talks about governance, and then some highlights to help understand a little bit better what the county does. So, if you have questions about that, feel free to ask me as well. This is the fall, and it's time for budgeting, so I thought I would spend most of my time talking about the proposed Hennepin County budget. Last week, we passed our maximum tax levy. That's the ceiling, as you know, in what we can assess for taxes for 2012. And we set it at 1 percent, a 1 percent increase. And that breaks out as 1 percent for the general operating budget, no increase for the rail authority, no increase for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. That 1 percent, if we were to impose it, would be approximately $7 million in new revenue for our operating budget. And, of course, we can go up to that 7 million, but we cannot go above it. So, this starts our budget process. We will be hearing from the county administrator in the next couple of weeks. He'll be presenting the budget for Hennepin County. After that, we will have a series of hearings. We will have our truth and taxation hearing on November 29th, and on December 13th, we are scheduled to approve the budget. As we talked about the maximum levy, and as we look at setting the levy and setting the budget, I think the factors that we'll be keeping in mind, or at least that I'll be keeping in mind, will be the revenue that we expect to lose from the state of Minnesota or from the federal government. And that picture is still developing. But what we know as a result of the agreement that ended the state shutdown is that for state revenue for our county program aid, which is the county equivalent to local government aid, we expect to see a net reduction of $5 million. And in our housing, or, sorry, human services and public health department, we expect to lose about $7.2 million. So, between those two, that's about 12.2, and we're talking about maybe a $7 million property tax increase. So, I predict that our budget next year will be smaller than our budget was in 2011. We also are conscious of the shift that's going to be imposed on our taxpayers because of the change from the market value credit program to a market value exclusion program. There was an article in the Star Tribune about that yesterday, which I think helped explain it. It's clear, as much as anything can be clear at this point, that higher valued homes, commercial industrial, will be paying more property tax because rather than the state paying for that property tax relief, it will be spread among property taxpayers. So, we will see different impacts in different communities in Hennepin County as a result of that. We will be starting our labor negotiations for the next two-year contract period with our unionized employees. About 70 percent of the county workforce is unionized. The last negotiation resulted in zero increases in 2010 and 2011. And we continue to see increased demand for the services the county provides. One example of that is food supports. In March of '07, we served 76,000 individuals. In March of 2011, 126,000 individuals. So, from 76,000 to 126,000. So, we'll be wrestling with all those factors and trying to make a good decision as we go through this process. One piece of good news is the approval of the Southwest Light Rail Line to go into preliminary engineering. We heard about that on September 2nd. That starts a two-year process, the outcome which is to have the line engineered to a 30 percent engineering level, and also to put us in line, hopefully, for an agreement with the federal government to fund 50 percent of the cost of building that line. As a project approved for preliminary engineering, we're one of 12 projects in the United States that have achieved that status. We have a recommendation from the federal government that we stop thinking about 2017 as the opening day for Southwest and think about 2018. So, we'll be considering that. And if you are not aware, the Metropolitan Council has been working on a series of color coding for the light rail lines. The Southwest would be green, and it would interline with the Central Corridor. So, somebody getting on in Eden Prairie would be able to ride all the way to the university or to the Capitol without getting off the Southwest Light Rail Line. So, that is good news. It's gonna take a lot of work. There's a lot of hurdles to overcome, but it's a major milestone after lots of work. And I know that many of you have been involved with this project and supportive of it, and I want to thank you for your role. I'll also mention quickly the interchange project, because you may hear about that. That is the area by the Twins Ballpark, where currently there's a stop for the Hiawatha Line. Once the Central is built, hopefully when the Southwest is built, there will be additional lines converging at that point. Right now, it's very congested when the Twins play, but there's not the capacity there for that intersection, which will be where the lines will intersect, and people will be changing cars, so, or changing trains. So, that project is something we're working hard on, trying to get it ready to be opening, to be opened on 2014, when the Central Corridor comes online. That's all that I have brought with me, but I am happy to answer your questions and to discuss anything with you that you might like to discuss.
Questions for Commissioner Callison or comments? Member Sprague?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Callison, for being here today. I just wanted to know the timeline on resolution of the St. Louis Park interchange, the freight interchange.
There isn't a timeline that I can give you. What the Federal Transportation Administration indicated in their letter is that there is, I would say, a connection between that freight railway location and the Southwest Line. I think they would say that the connection is because the time's gotten short enough now that that line has to be figured out. We have to decide what we're gonna do before Southwest can be built. There's also litigation. A citizen group has sued MinDOT, and the city of St. Louis Park has sued MinDOT, so that also means it's really not possible right now to give you a timeline for when that might be resolved.
Other questions for the commissioner? Member Swenson?
We've got kind of a cool process that has been going on for about a year, as we've studied a small area in our community for a rebuild, which is this Grandview area, kind of from here to the east across 100.
Near where the library is, the Grandview Library?
Yep, through there and through where Jerry's is, and just, you know, that eventually it'll be redone. We now have a grant to do it for $100,000 that will really benefit us from the Met Council. And, you know, you may see some things that come out of it that will come your way, so just kind of, you know, we'll let you know when it happens. But it's, first for us to do this, we're hoping to do it with some other areas in town, so that we can basically let the commercial people know ahead of time what we'd like, and then if there's some changes we need to make, whether it's on county land, city land, or whatever, and get together and do it, we can do that in a cohesive manner. So...
Great. I appreciate that, heads up. Thank you.
Thanks.
You know, we've served together on several different, in several different capacities, I guess, several different organizations, and I always appreciate your insight and wisdom on everything.
Thank you.
It's just an absolute pleasure to serve with you on these various boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland.
Thank you.
It's truly been my pleasure. It really has been, so thank you for all your support.
Member Brindle?
I just have a quick one. Mayor Hovland serves with you on specifically the Southwest Corridor. Steering Committee and I have the pleasure of being his alternate. And I just want to let people know that while the Southwest Corridor, and I'm gonna be so bold as to say when it is running, will not run through Edina, but as, being part of the Steering Committee from the city of Edina, our role is really to look at opportunities to connect residents and businesses with that line, and look at where that line nearly touches Edina all the way along that side, from St. Louis Park all the way to Eden Prairie, including Opus. And the Opus site actually is as close as it gets to Edina because part of Opus is Edina. So, we have a bit of real estate there. But nonetheless, that is really our role in the Southwest Corridor project, is to make sure that we have as much accessibility as possible across the north side of, north and west side of Edina. So, it's very exciting.
Well, I believe Commissioner McAlpin would say that we get smarter as we build these lines, and on Southwest, we've gotten smarter about thinking about land use and connections and how we're gonna build those. And so, there's been a strong effort by the county and the cities to think through what that corridor is gonna look like, and it truly is a corridor. We think of the line, but it's really the land around the corridor, and how it will be affected by the line, how we want it to develop, how we want to connect the various communities and organizations or institutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Ben?
Yes, Commissioner Callison, so that our residents can better understand how their lives are impacted or affected by the county, served by the county, too. You've mentioned tonight the rail authority, food support, human services. I think most of our residents are aware that the library that they go to is part of the Hennepin County system. What are some of the other services that Hennepin County provides, and some of the other governance that Hennepin County provides?
Public health. Certainly, as we talk about influenza, time to get your shot. We talk about epidemics, the public health department is involved in that. We actually do some inspections in some communities as a health department, so that's part of it. Our hospital system, HCMC Clinic System, providing health services, more than just public health, but really personal health services to people, so there's that aspect as well. We have the largest local police or local law enforcement agency in the state of Minnesota with the Sheriff's Department. We also operate a jail. We have the medical examiner. We have the crime lab. We have the various, not just transportation, we have the housing efforts that take place under that Department of Housing and Community Works. We have the roads that we maintain. I'm trying to think if we have any projects in Edina. Well, 70th must be coming along. So, major efforts in that area as well. And then, really, 40 percent of our budget, at least 40 percent, and it's on this front sheet, actually, 44 percent goes to health and human services. So, it's really about making sure that people are housed, that they are fed, that they are safe, child protection services, vulnerable adult services, all those are managed by Hennepin County as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Member Sprague?
Member Bennett, just triggered another thought. We're, our Edina Transportation Commission, in conjunction with staff, is looking at doing some enhanced pedestrian crossing studies for France Avenue. Also, staff has brought forward a bridge proposal, pedestrian bridge. So, just another thing I want to keep in the loop on, we look forward to coordinating those studies with Hennepin County staff as that is deemed fit.
And we have a complete streets policy, which really urges our staff to look at streets as more than just for cars, but also for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for all users. So, that's in tune with what we're thinking as well.
Thank you. Well, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very much.
Thank you.
Contact me if you have questions.
Thanks for coming this evening.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right. All right. We'll go back now to the consent agenda, and several of us, I think, wanted to visit about the award of bid for the landscaping improvements proposed for West 70th Street. And Jesse, I don't know if you'd wanna, one of the things that I wanted to visit about was just to, you know, to be able to show people, and maybe you can use this on an overhead, is to be able to show folks in our community that might be tuning into television, you know, they can see what's going to happen on West 70th Street, or is proposed to happen from a landscaping standpoint, and talk about what role the folks that lived down in that neighborhood had in picking some of the plant materials that are gonna be, that are proposed for use down there. I guess is a better way to put it. So, if you could kind of walk us through that, and I think then Member Brindle and Member Sprague, I know, have some questions with regard to the proposal as well. Thank you.
As you know, West 70th Street is a street reconstruction project that is currently happening this year. The landscaping plan was separate contract versus, oh, sorry. As you know, the 70th Street Reconstruction Project is happening right now. It's about half to two-thirds, about two-thirds of the way completed. The landscaping plan is a separate project that we brought in S.E.H. in Veronica, landscape architect, to work in conjunction with residents along the way to come up with an adequate or a nice landscaping plan throughout. This first sheet kind of shows generally where they're showing some different plantings, some gardens, some tree relocate, or new tree locations.
I think it's a little bit probably difficult for folks to see. Can you point out generally where Christ Presbyterian Church is, and then...
Presbyterian Church is right here on the west side of the project. Highway 100, yep, sorry. Apologize, I'm new to this. So, Highway 100 is on this top sheet. It's the western edge of the boundary. As we're moving east towards France Avenue, you can see, like, Cornelia School is right here, and then it continues on towards France Avenue.
All right. Well, let's just walk from west to east here, and it looks like, first of all, when you come down the exit ramp on 70th, or off 100 at 70th, the first thing folks are gonna notice is a change right in front of them when they get down to the bottom of the hill there, and that's taking that existing traffic island that's there and converting that over to a plant material.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, that's still west of Highway 100, we're gonna have, we're gonna have some plant material there.
Correct. Right now, it's existing all hard surface. It's maybe not the most aesthetically pleasing site when you come off. So, we are proposing using that center concrete area as a planting. There'll be some shrubs, some flowers, some grasses, potentially some smaller trees as well. And then, as we move to the east side of Highway 100, with the street reconstruction project, we eliminate the, kind of, the flowing right turn lane. This area is also just pavement. It's just striped for, no drive lanes. So, we're gonna be converting that into a planting area as well, again, with shrubs, some flowers, grasses, a nice mix. The whole grass area just south of 70th Street, across from Christ Presbyterian Church, which is currently mainly just a grass area, they're gonna be converting that into, again, a flower planting area. So, it's gonna give a nice visual look as people enter into 70th Street. As we continue moving east along 70th Street, the area of right-of-way that we have available isn't conducive to a lot of planting, so it's mainly trees, new tree lines going in, and they're along the pathway. And that kind of continues towards the east, towards France Avenue. And then, of course, once we get further, here we go.
There you go.
As we move towards France Avenue, where Valley View currently enters in, there is a roundabout, which will have more substantial plantings. Right now, it's kind of, when you drive through there currently, you can see that there's kind of a mound of dirt that will be filled in with grass, flowers, a few trees along the way. And then, you can kind of see, here's a little better rendition of kind of how that center of the roundabout is gonna look, including kind of a rendition as you're approaching the roundabout. You can see there's some different plantings with the flowers, the shrubs in it as well.
Some stone material in the middle.
Correct. Correct, stones in the middle as well.
All right. And then, you've got a sheet, I think, that shows the various plant material that people have helped select. Why don't you just show that quickly as well? And then, I think we'll have Member Brindle and Member Sprague ask you their questions.
Correct. I know, we were questioned by residents about, there's, in the Boulevard area, we were proposing kind of a hard concrete surface with exposed aggregate, and some of the residents expressed interest in making that into some plantings. With the landscape proposal, we did include various plant materials that residents can choose from, from daylilies to different types of grasses, to different types of flowers as well. And this kind of shows the range of not only plant and flower materials, but also some of the trees that are available and will be used along this corridor.
Okay. And then, just one other question for me, and that is, it looks like the landscape architects that we utilized estimated the bid to be a little over $200,000 for this work, and it, the company that you're recommending, Cedar Ridge Landscaping, came in with a low bid of $115,000.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Good. All right. Member Brindle, and then Member Sprague.
Thank you. Jesse, I'm looking at page two of seven, which is the first graphic that you showed, and the callouts on here identify the yellow trees as existing tree typical, and there are a couple tiny ones that call out a green tree. As I'm looking along 70th Street, there's yellow big trees and green smaller trees. Are all of those existing trees, or are the green ones new trees?
Councilmember Brindle, I am not sure on that.
Okay.
But I can certainly look that up and get back to you on that.
Well, not to worry. I was just curious to know how many trees we're adding, and it's just a curiosity on my part, how many of those are existing.
Yeah.
And so, I, you know, it's just, it's a curiosity more than anything. It doesn't affect my dislike or like of the plan.
That's right. If you hang on one second, I do have one additional sheet that...
Okay.
With the bid that calls out how many different types of trees were called out. And this is for, is part of the bid process, the new trees being added. I'm not aware of how many existing trees are out there, but we currently call out for a deciduous tree, two-and-a-half inch caliber, about 60 new trees being factored in for coniferous, seven-foot height tree, 18. A coniferous, five-foot height tree, there's gonna be eight, and then some ornamental, one-and-a-half inch trees, which will be 35. So, that's approximately 95, 120 new trees, thereabouts.
Yeah. And that's, that really is mostly the raised islands on either side of Highway 100, the entrance of, the entrance to Christ Presbyterian with some of the evergreens there, and the hawthorn trees, and Area C, Area C being that grassy area at Normandale Boulevard and 70th Street. So, that accounts for, I think, a good amount of what you're talking about. The landscape island, then, on the east end, I can see those are new trees, and then the berm area on the east end, those are new trees as well, trees and flowers, and another bank of hawthorns. All right. In the roundabout area, it talks about three granite pillars. So, those are, that's the structure that's in the center of the roundabout, is the three pillars?
Correct.
Okay. How tall are they? Do you have any notion of how tall they are?
I am unaware of the height of the granite pillars.
I'm just curious by scale of how tall they are. I actually think it's gonna be very cool, so... But those are my questions. I just was trying to attach some meaning to what I was seeing here, as far as what this little circle means and what that circle means. But by and large, I think it's, it continues, I know Arneson Park well, having been on the Garden Council for a number of years, and I know how passionate a lot of the community is with the history of that park, and the fact that Mort Arneson was a horticulturist and a person with an orchard. So, carrying that forward out of the park and on to 70th Street, and using that as the basis for this, I think, was an inspired idea. I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Sprague?
Thank you, Mayor Hovland. Just a comment on the Boulevard trees. The yellow are existing trees, and the green, smaller ones are proposed, new trees, with the choice being up to the resident whether or not they'd like the tree installed. I have a few questions on this for you, and I would suggest that Director Houle receive some of this feedback. I know I couldn't be here tonight, just to make sure we're all on the same page. On the, on page four of seven, the, it looks like it's imprinted brick crossing from the north to the south. I just want to confirm that that is going to be there.
Okay.
Right where your finger is just above that, I see this...
Correct. Right here.
That's not just a rendering, that's actually planned to be installed. Is that correct?
I believe so. I will have to double-check with Mr. Houle.
And my understanding is that imprinted brick crosswalks will also be at Wooddale, with a new pedestrian flasher at West Shore at the new light, and also at Cornelia with the existing light. And I'd just like to confirm that design detail as well.
I will confirm that with Manager Houle.
Yep. Just want to be sure. Second point on the landscaping, there are a group of residents that are doing some voluntary landscaping in the Boulevard across from Arneson Acres Park, and I'm wondering if, let me segue this a different way. So, there are nine homes doing some voluntary landscaping to the north of Arneson Park, from the church all the way up to just about West Shore. And then, between West Shore and Wooddale, on the south side, the city is now, in lieu of aggregate, placing daylilies in the Boulevard. And the nine residents to the north are also doing daylilies. I'm wondering if it would behoove us to see if we could do daylilies as well along Arneson Park and have it as a community planting project, maybe even something with the Garden Council, they're, I mean, that's their home. But it would sync up with the voluntary landscaping that the neighbors are paying for with the rest of the city landscaping, and kind of make, give us a continuous theme throughout, through that corridor, especially since on the west end of the street, we already have all of this new landscaping. You've got the new concrete Boulevard, I'm sorry, concrete bed in the middle, plus on the lower, the south section across from the church, we have all those new trees going in on that right-of-way. So, that would be another thing I'd like to explore before we move forward with the installation. The other comment on the roundabout is, I'm not sold on this design, and I think, I'd like some discussion with the rest of the council on this, but my idea is to try to bring the motif on the east side of France through this corridor. I mean, the roundabout kind of connects with the other side, maybe, and I know that those stones are arranged differently than this. And so, what I'm proposing is that we take a look at trying to create, again, continuity as we're going through this corridor, all the way from Xerxes to 100, and perhaps this is not the best plan for that roundabout. So, the other alternate to this, there were a couple different alternates looked at, also involves stone, so I'm not sure there might, would be a cost differential, but I think it's worthy of exploration. And then, the other comment is, to me, this design look looks way too disheveled and messy, and I think something with more bloom, a little bit cleaner look, would be more of a statement going into the corridor. So... So I'd like to hear the, some feedback from the rest of the council on those ideas.
Member Swenson?
I look at the new roundabout as the farthest east beginning, where to the east of it is commercial and to the west of it is residential. So while I'm a continuity person, don't get me wrong, I wanted the landscaping for the City Hall to look like the landscaping on the other side of Highway 100. That's how, where I go. But I, I can understand having it have a different look. Disheveled wouldn't be the one I would choose. But if it were more, you know, where Arnison Acres is kind of the flowers on the west, even though you don't see them, this would be the flowers on the east. And it, and it's the other bookmark to, really to a school and a residential area, unfortunately, that's linked by to, it's a major traffic graph. But I could see having it look a little different, as being a different statement.
Member Bennett?
I know we've received some concerns from residents about the height of the grasses that are between Galleria and the businesses to the south. And I think in an area where you're going to have more people crossing on foot and also on bicycles, in a commercial area, I think the grasses can function. People come to a defined intersection to cross. Here, I think visibility is really, really important. And so something with a little less height than some of the grasses that are on 70th East of France would be important. Also, looking at the plants that are depicted here as the potted prairie, I can see that these are actually fairly long blooming, perennials. They also are perennials that attract bees and butterflies. And they are very drought resistant, long tapirots. So they would be durable as well as have a good bloom time. If you want something constantly in bloom, then either you're asking for almost something with a, you know, regular gardener coming into tend because you have to stagger those bloom times, or for annuals, which can get more expensive. So I think that the choice here is a, is a good choice. It is a more of a prairie look, but it also has, again, some really strong, long bloomers.
My comment is that I wouldn't let this sketch lead you to the fact that this is going to look random and disheveled. I think it's just a sketch. So I, looking at what is going to be planted in there, the sketch, in my opinion, doesn't depict that at all. And so I, I ditto Member Bennett's comment that, that the grasses on the other side of France have been a concern. And I've heard about it from a number of people with visibility. And here, you want visibility to the other side of that roundabout, both for, for the crosswalk as well as for the fact that this is a neighborhood. And so I, I wouldn't let the sketch with, with some of the little viney lines bother you. I think it's, I think it's actually going to be quite orderly.
Going, going back to, to Member Bennett's comment, though, there was another sketch that was horizontal, not vertical, for the stones. And that, that would address the height issue. And also, instead of the tall potted, I would, I could see bringing in a shorter, the dwarf daylilies, which is already going to be in the corridor, along with some other perennials, lower, to your point. And then-
Echinacea comes in different heights. It, you can, I mean, you can get echinacea that's four feet tall, and that's the pink flower that's depicted. Also, two feet tall. And the asclepius, the butterfly weed that's depicted, that's about two feet, 24 inches or so. It looks like yarrow, if I don't need my reading glasses for that. That's about 18 inches, 24 inches. So I think that the height, I think the height is going to maybe be less, again, overwhelming. It'll permit that visibility. Also, the way that it's planted can, you know, put some more order into it. But the bloom times, you're definitely going to get longer blooms with these choices than you will with daylilies.
Okay.
You know, I, I had compatible thoughts with you a month or so ago, or six weeks ago, and I talked to Director Hul about it. And I got the very explanation that Member Swenson shared with us here a few minutes ago. I've gotten comfortable with the notion that this landscaping was prepared in a way to make it, to, to address the residential nature of that portion of 70th Street from France to Highway, Trunk Highway 100. And so maybe having a little bit different look is okay. I hesitate to second guess the design work at this point in time. We haven't been integrally involved in it. I think a lot of the neighbors have. Where one person might like horizontal, another might like vertical, I tend to kind of like what I see in the drawings here. So my sense of this whole thing would be not to disturb it. The comments are good ones. Trust the folks that worked on it, including the professionals and the neighborhood. And I think we're going to end up with something extraordinary, where I think all the way through this process, and Member Sprague was involved in it from the beginning, we worried about how are you going to make an area, a street that connects a trunk highway with a regional shopping center, become a, a neighborhood, instead of feeling to people like a thoroughfare, you know, where they could just go at the pace they wanted. And we, so we worked hard on these issues of speed and volume. I suspect that these landscaping strategies will do a lot to slow people down. I don't know about the volume, that'll, we'll see how that works over time. But, you know, what should have been done in 1956 was never done when this mall was built. And maybe it should have been a parkway back then. It never was done that way. And so we inherited a tough problem here. And I think we're, we're going to end up with a magnificent result here for an urban community here. So I tell everybody, thanks for working on this as hard as they have. And we're going to end up with a great product here. What's the timing on the landscaping installation? Are you going to wait till spring now, or is some of that going to happen yet this fall?
You know, I, I'm unfamiliar with the timing of this project.
Spring.
I believe it's, I do believe it is the spring.
Okay.
Mayor, what about the, the notion of exploring that, that section that the city owns, the Boulevard, as I mentioned, adjacent to Arnison?
Oh, I think that's an excellent idea. Ever since they took those bushes out below the clubhouse-
Parking lot.
The parking lot, I think something doesn't look right over there to me. It looks too, too bald, too open.
Can we, can we request the Garden Council? Put that on their agenda and-
Sure. There is, I'm trying to think, there's a plan, there, there is a landscape plan for Arnison. And so Tim Zimmerman is going to be the guy who really will, will answer some of these questions as far as what's appropriate, what can we do, where can we put it, what is going to tolerate the salt, and all of that from the parking lot. And so he's, he's the guy, and there is a master plan, that's the word I wanted. There is a master plan. And so he'll pull that out and be able to give us some, some suggestions. And I'm sure he'd be happy to do it, because it'd beautify the whole area.
It seems like in years gone by, the Garden Council has always planted, maybe it's Tim, in that area right west of the entryway.
That's right.
Along the, where they have the chain link and, and the posts, the pillars, they've always had a beautiful array of annuals in there. Well, maybe that could be rethought now, too, and do something that's consistent.
Councilmember Sprague, an idea of like, kind of a centralized look. So if you could pass that on to the Garden Council, that would be great.
They, they should know that across the street, they're doing dwarf daylilies, monochromatic, one color. To the, to the east, on the other side, it's daylilies, one color. And so therefore, we'd have to know pretty soon to try to coordinate the resident with the other side. What if we want, we all picked, you know, lemon yellow, happy returns, then we could coordinate to do that on the other side. And the Garden Council, if they, if they didn't want to take this on as a project, we could do it as a neighborhood planting project.
Sure.
It's just a question of getting the city to commit to the vegetation, to mirror the look already. It's kind of, this whole thing's evolving kind of organically, so that's why I brought it up tonight.
No, I think Mayor, Member Brindle's point, though, that there's already a plan for it, that we, we just need to see what the plan is, and would they be interested in altering it, so.
Yeah. If it doesn't work, modify it.
Can I move that we approved 4D?
Sure. Is there a second? Move to the second, and we approve 4D. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right, we are now on to the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in our community that wishes to come forward and address the council on a matter of concern? Seeing no one coming forward, move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the reports and recommendations section. And we have Resolution 2011-89, accepting various donations. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Moved in second, and we accept the donations made to the City of Edina through Resolution 2011-89. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Names of the donors will be placed onto the website, but there's a couple to point out here, I think, that are significant. To the Edina Arts Center, a donation from the Edina Community Foundation, $1,258, under, underwriting the Bicycle Mosaic Sculpture Promenade. And we had that event out there a week ago Saturday, a terrific event. And then Braemar Golf Course, the Cop Family, Family Foundation gave the golf course $1,000. So, Member Bennett, was, was, that was it?
Just money.
Okay, thank you. All right, good. Any other correspondence that we should be seeing that you're aware of, Karen?
Nothing I'm aware of.
All right, thank you. All right. Tonight, we'll start with Member Brindle.
I have one, a big one. Could you take one and pass those? On Sunday, October 9th, the City of Edina, along with Edina Public Schools, and Edina Morningside Rotary Club, Bike Edina, and Alina Hospitals and Clinics, is hosting a bike ride that will start, will meet at, thank you, Jennifer, will start and meet at the parking lot of Courtney Fields. And this will be a five mile loop in the southwest corner of Edina. And the idea is that possibly as soon as next year, this will expand into four, five mile loops in our city. So it's a true Tour de Edina. So you can choose to bike your section of Edina, or you can choose to bike all of it. But it's to promote bicycling as a way to get around Edina. So we will be riding in bike lanes. We're not going to close any streets. All the bicyclists will be obeying traffic laws. And we will be riding in bike lanes and riding through Edina as we would any other day. And, and that's, that's the, the mission as well of this, of this bike ride is active living plus healthy eating equals life balance. And as a city, we continue to embrace more and more ways to provide healthy and active opportunities for our citizens. And this is just another one of those. So the website is tourdeedina, T-O-U-R-D-E-E-D-I-N-A dot org. And you'll find the information you need to know there, and you can register there as well. So please do join us, and we'll have lots of fun. We know that we've got a number of nonprofit groups that are going to be out promoting their own nonprofits. And so the more the merrier, and we'll have some fun. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
One announcement also, and then some questions on another event. Hennepin County, one of the events that they are sponsoring is a medicine collection event for people who have prescription medications in their home that they no longer want or need. There is a collection on Saturday, September 24th, in St. Louis Park, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 7250 Highway 7, which is a parking lot at the southwest quadrant of Highway 7 and Louisiana Avenue. Enter off Lake Street West. And I will leave this with Jennifer Bennerat. Perhaps we can leave it with the city receptionist if residents have any calls. There'll be another event on October 8th in Orono. This is a service that they are starting to provide. It is not, previously, we were told that you just flush all prescriptions. Well, that goes into the water supply. And it's meaning that we're having antibiotics to deal with in our drinking water sources. And so this is a real safe, safe way to deal with them. Then I also have some-
An add to that. You leave them in your, in their existing containers. You just take a magic marker and take the prescription number and your name off, blanket out that way. And that's how they ask that you bring them to them.
And in a clear, in a clear zip block, sorry. Thank you for, for adding to that. But again, I will leave the full instructions with the city receptionist. Also, I understand that there is going to be a public meeting concerning the Bike Boulevard. Does someone have details about that, date, time?
I don't know that we have a date yet.
Yeah, we do.
Jesse, do you know the name? I mean, the name, the date?
Sorry, Councilmember Bennett, I, I do not have that date offhand.
Well, the information that I have is that it's been scheduled for Wednesday, October 5th at 7:00 at the Public Works Building. And there is a competing event in the community that evening. At 6:30 here at City Hall, there will be a presentation by Rick Dresson, the Superintendent of Schools, about the upcoming school district referendum. And then at 7:00 p.m., the League of Women Voters is sponsoring the candidate forum for the school board candidates. There are four running for three seats. So I'm concerned about that conflict for people who are concerned about their community and would want to be two places at once.
I, I do know that we're on a pretty tight schedule for the public process.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I'm assuming, but it would be good to know more, but I'm assuming that different dates were vetted with, with staff to try to, you know, everybody has a conflict somewhere. But it needs to happen sooner rather than later. So absent some, the next day or the day before, I would say roll with it.
Then my follow-ups are just that, if we are going to roll with it on that date and at that time and at that place, what is the, do we have a plan for publicity? And can we get a press release out as soon as possible so that people are aware of it? And then finally, a question regarding the roles that the BETF and ETC will play at the event. Since there's a discussion about these two, at least two possibilities, whether it's the removal of parking or the addition of these advisory bike lanes, which would not require the removal of parking, I think it would be really helpful and important to have biking, people who are familiar with and bicycle on a frequent basis present to add to the, to contribute to the discussion.
It's my understanding that engineering staff is working to first craft a letter for the affected residents. And then after that time, or in conjunction with the dissemination of the letter, will also be issuing a press release. All of that is scheduled to happen this week, of course.
So we still do have time for, for a press release, since it's something with that citywide impact? Great. All right. Thank you.
And maybe if I can just jump in, you know, we can certainly go back and take a second look at that date, and see if there might be other options that would still fit within the timeframe to meet the call, the requirements of the grant, so.
And I guess I would frame it in a request, too, that the ETC and the BETF, that all their members be notified and invited to attend whatever date is ultimately chosen.
Understood.
Great. Thank you.
Good. Member Swenson? Member Sprague?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. I wanted to suggest some future agenda items under reports and recommendations. The first one, I talked to Manager Neal about briefly, but it is staff coming forward with a recommendation on future right-of-way management in our ordinance. This is something that came up with the Valley View sidewalk project. And I think we need to get some staff input as to where to go now in the future, given the issues that were discussed that evening. Would everyone be okay with?
Yep, excellent topic.
Sure.
Okay. And then related to that, perhaps even the same evening, a staff report on the update of Valley View and Sally Lane, the landscaping that's actually causing the obstruction. I've received a few calls, again, from residents wanting to know the stats of what the city plans to do or not to do. And so I think it's an appropriate time. I, I suggest we put that on for October 4th as a staff update.
Well, that is the date that an update is planned, is October 4th.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
I, I've been asking for a date, and I finally sent an email directly to Manager Hul today. And Mr. Neal got back to me today, and said, or Director Hul, and Manager Neal, we should just call them by their first names. Neal, we should just call them by their first names, but I, anyway, he got back to me, and it's October 4th.
Perfect. And then I'd also like to suggest, in our, our next work session with the planning commission, that we bring up the topic again of rooftop, rooftop cafes, and, and talk about that in conjunction with sidewalk cafes. I know that some of those standards need to be reviewed as well, and to me, the, the impacts are similar enough where we, it would make sense to discuss the two in conjunction with one another.
Member Swenson.
I know that we've already put that on the agenda with planning commission to discuss with them when we meet with them next, the rooftop, if you want to add sidewalk cafes, but rooftop's already on that agenda.
Okay, I talked to Carrie Teague today, Planner Teague, and he just wanted me to specify tonight that we were interested in, in broaching those. Maybe it's the addition of the sidewalk, but again, if you look at the sidewalk licensing standards in place right now, they're, they're outdated and some of the, and there's some non-compliance even with current standards, so it's something we should, I think we should take up. If everyone's okay with it.
I was interested in code, in bringing code up to date.
Right. I'd like, I'd like to, I don't think it was that long ago that we tried to set some standards for sidewalk dining, so. Things change, though, and maybe they are outdated, so let's take a look at them. I think an ancillary issue that we're going to have to deal with fairly soon is happy hour. And I, you know, I'm getting calls from some of our restaurants that are still concerned about that timeframe from 3:00 to 6:00 in the, 3:00 in the afternoon to 6:00 in the evening, not being able to compete with their fellow restaurateurs that might be located right in Bloomington or in Minneapolis, and I think we're, I suspect we'll need to be addressing that issue fairly soon.
I would support that as well. Would that come through the joint work session or just on our agenda separately?
I don't think, I don't think that we'd need to address that with the planning commission. I think we just need to take that on ourselves as an issue, and I think that the, some of the restaurateurs may be bringing it to us fairly soon. Deb?
Mayor and council, we, staff, Manager Neal, Police Chief Long, myself, have met with Dan McElroy, who's representing the Restaurant Tours and Beverage Association, and with expressing some of their concerns, and our direction was they needed to put, that the restaurateurs need to bring a cohesive plan for what they're looking for, and I believe that they're working on that.
So it's going to come forward on its own accord?
I believe, I believe so.
Great, thank you. And then finally, we have been doing a lot of financial due diligence this year on some of our enterprises with the Golf Course Consultants and the Edinburgh Consultants, and I would like to suggest we complete that work by hiring an Art Center Board Consultant as well. And so tonight, I would like to move that we, that staff draft an RFP to hire a consultant with input from the Art Center Board, and with a scope to include the following. One would be obviously a review of fees and operations, just like we did for the other facilities, a review of the, the brick and mortar, the building, and specifically, if there are other location alternatives that would be more cost-effective, whether that's a new facility, where the function can move there and be combined with something else like a new community center or something like that. But I think we need to have some feasibility on the options. And then also, the organizational structure, whether it continues in its current format, whether it becomes a 501(c)(3) with some type of annual payment from the city, or if there's some other structure that a consultant would recommend that other, other municipalities are doing. And then finally, whether the all or, or a partial, all or a part of the current functions continue into the future. For instance, we're doing certain classes there and so on. Is that, is it feasible to continue all of those in the future, or would it become a different menu of, of services available for the public?
I think it's, I think we probably uniformly believe this is an issue whose time has come. So let's take a look at it and, and maybe look at the, the projected costs of a consultant, and you, you can only do that, I guess, through a RFP or a letter of interest.
Should it come back as an agenda item, Karen, or would you just, how would you like to handle this?
I mean, I think if it's important to have some public discussion about it, it would be, I don't know if you have any comments, Roger, but it would normally be an agenda item.
Well, I think staff crafting a proposed RFP, as Member Sprague is suggesting, or an indication of interest letter, one of those two, would be satisfactory to get the council moving on a discussion.
Yeah, I, I talked to Manager Neal about it, and he, he again suggested I, I move the item, and if we can vote on it.
Can we accept that motion?
Yep, and then, and then it'll come back once the, the proposals have, have been brought forward.
I know that we've also had a recommendation from staff when we've had similar inquiries in the past. It sounds like that's sort of been made informally. This is an issue I think that we have all been looking at. I can say from just some movement around the community, this, this fall, that in addition to the Norenberg Gardens, I stopped in at the Minnetonka Art Center, which is right down the road. It makes a very nice little field trip, day trip, and it's a beautiful facility. It's organized in much a different way, but that is a 501(c)(3). The Hopkins Art Center is a 501(c)(3). The Bloomington Center is a 501(c)(3). In both the instances of Hopkins and Bloomington, the, they are, those centers are housed in space that is owned by their respective cities, and there's a, I believe, a rental arrangement. In the case of the Minnetonka Center for the Arts, which actually is located in Orono, that is a freestanding organization that has existed, I think, for over 70 years. But certainly, I think these, these questions are, are good ones. In terms of the functions, that's the only question that I wonder if that, in, in part, you would look to whatever your ongoing structure is, I think, to answer part of that, but I also see that as something that we would want to, we know the importance of the arts in our community. I think there's an opportunity here for us also to look with the school district in terms of the partnerships that we can expand with community education, for instance. Not that we wouldn't necessarily have a center for the arts, but where is there some intersection and opportunities for partnering?
Sure. Those are very good points as well. So I think that'll be a run and a rest in discussion. Member Brindle?
We've heard from one member of the Art Center Board, which has spurred on a lot of these ideas, but there are other members of the Art Center Board. Are we moving too quickly on this before talking to the rest of the board? Is it, would it be appropriate for them to be considered in, in whether they feel a consultant is, is, is their preference?
Yep.
Member Swenson.
My feeling is that it's a financial situation for us because of the amount of money that we put into it. So whether they want it or not, to be honest, I think we need to do it. So I appreciate your, your thoughts, and I actually have two other Art Center Board people that have come up to me suggesting it. So, you know, they may not want it, a number of people, but I think that is our responsibility as a council to do it, so.
They can also be involved in the, this drafting of the scope and the RFP, just like the park board was.
I was also contacted, approached by another park board member yesterday who has longstanding familiarity and affection for the Art Center, and expressed a lot of concern about the finances, and so I think-
Former Art Center Board member?
Actually, former and current.
Okay. So you said park board.
You said park board.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, but I think, I think there is concern, and I, I do think it's a, an issue of financial responsibility, as well as, again, the fact that the arts are important in this community, and we want to find a way to carry that forward into the future.
Okay, all right.
Member Brindle, I think you raised a, a good point, and I think these things could be initiated in multiple ways. One way we've seen recently is that the park board initiated the notion that we should look at the golf course operations and wanted to do an RFP. This is going to be initiated in a slightly different way, but it doesn't mean the Art Center Board won't be included in this whole process, just as the park board was in that particular process, so.
Actually, I think part of the motion asks that they be consulted for the RFP.
Yeah, with input from-
With input, so.
All right, any further discussion?
We have not seconded it, have we?
I didn't.
We have, yeah. We, we're on, we're on discussion. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carrie. Good, great discussion.
And then finally, just wanted to let you know that the city of Edina made history two Saturdays ago when I crossed the finish line as the first councilperson triathlete in the history of Edina since 1888. And if they, if you have some type of flag or something I can wear when I'm crossing the next finish, the dinastial, maybe on a headband or something, I'm willing to, to take that on and carry the torch for Edina.
Attached. I'm pretty sure I could have.
Let's, let's, I think that'd be a photo-
And for a mic, it loud, neon and blinking.
And the funny thing is, you know I'll wear it, so that's all I have, thank you.
Well, congratulations on, on finishing, yeah. This morning at Rotary, we had a speaker from an energy company who talked about a device that they sell called a, I'll call it a kilowatt manager. Apparently, power that may come into your building may not be efficiently used or effectively used at its maximum capacity, so you might, you might use 80, 70% of the power that comes into your house, the rest of it gets diffused. So this kilowatt manager is used to make sure that you make more efficient and effective use of the power that's coming into your building. The fellow talked about the fact that they had done this up at a superbank up on the north side, $26,000 expenditure for the kilowatt manager that's going to provide them with a payoff within four years, and then thereafter help them reduce their overall electrical costs. So I handed a card in our meeting, our work session meeting upstairs with the Energy and Environment Commission, I handed one of the fellows' cards to Bill Cirx and suggested that Energy and Environment contact this company and at least find out more about this kilowatt manager, and it may be something that we want to look at in a variety of our buildings, you know, starting with something like Bremar Rice Arena, so we can maybe over time cut our, make our electrical usage more efficient and effective. So whether it's with that company or some other company similar in nature, I have no preference there, but the notion of it seemed really quite interesting to both of us, I think. And it has both a commercial and a residential application. I think you've all been invited now to the healthy, I'll call it the healthy initiatives, healthy community initiatives rollout on the 27th of September over at Edina Country Club, 8 o'clock in the morning. I would encourage all of you to be there if you can make it, and you'll be able to see the rollout by Blue Cross Blue Shield of this, of this new program and the strategy for, for improving the health of all of our residents, making Edina an ever better place to live. And then, let's see, also, if any of you are interested in going to this Greater MSP kickoff, which is the new regional economic development entity, let me know. They're kicking it off on October 11th at the Pantages Theater, and you need to sign up in advance electronically, and then you get a ticket electronically to attend. And I think it's from, it's like 5:30 in the evening to 5:30 to 7:00. I think it'd be well worthwhile. I'd love to see all of you there.
Can you give information to all of us?
I can, I can. And Karen, if you remind me tomorrow, maybe shoot me an email. I'll try to get an email sent back to you that you can then forward on to all of the council members. Tomorrow, we've got our fourth Mileage-Based User Fee Meeting. That continues to be an interesting endeavor, and I, and I think I've told some of you outside the context of these meetings, but I'll tell you here collectively, one of the very interesting things about this process on the Mileage-Based User Fee analysis is that there are members of the legislature that are both past and present, liberal and conservative, and everybody is working together on the various aspects of this problem to see if we can figure out whether it makes any sense over time to have mileage-based user fees supplement or replace the gas tax. And it is really interesting to be part of this process because it is so contrary to what you hear happens at the legislature with folks of different political or different ideologies. And I tell you, all these folks are working together well, and it's really good to be a part of it, so. That's it for me. Karen, anything?
Actually-
Or you might want to report on where our city manager is this evening?
I would be happy to. Our city manager is at the ICMA Conference, which is being held in Milwaukee this year.
And that's for the people who don't know the acronym?
International City County Managers Association.
All right.
And when I am not filling in for him, I have a couple of projects I thought maybe I would update you on that I'm working on, one of which you may have noticed when we were in the community room, that there was unusual a wall art, a large map, and that was actually related to some work that a group of employees are doing in our Building Inspections Department with regard to a lean initiative, and we've been working with a consultant from Anoka Hennepin Technical College. And lean, for those of you who aren't aware, is sort of a process that you go through to look at your own operations, to see where there might be waste or non-valued activities to sort of improve final outcomes for the customer and to reduce costs. And right now, they're looking at that project with respect to commercial remodels here at Edina. And so what you saw on the wall was actually a swim map exercise where you kind of break the task down into individual components. And the other item that I thought you might be interested in is one of the things that I'm working on is kind of looking at our boards and commissions to make sure that we're being as effective as possible and that we're, you know, for, for our citizens to be volunteering their time, we want to make sure that they're having a good experience. And so staff has been meeting as a group, the staff liaisons, and we've been identifying areas where we think we might be able to have an impact as a group by working together. But I've also had individual meetings with each of the commission chairs with the exception of one, and so I've interviewed them and been asking them questions about bylaws, training, possibly a survey of commission members, and items like that.
All right, thank you. Roger, anything we need to know about on the legal front?
Nothing, nothing new, Mayor, thank you.
All right, legislature is not in session, so we're-
Thank goodness, yes.
All right, all right.
Karen, I just want to comment about-
Seal.
Microphone. Wanted to let you all know that we have flu shots scheduled here on October 7th, starting at 7:00 a.m., and someone will be here until about noon. So if you're interested in getting a flu shot, give Terry Wilson a call at-
Bring your health insurance card and your deductible, yeah, your copay?
No, no, no copay.
7, October 7th at 7:00 a.m.
That's when we start.
Till when?
Noon.
Okay.
All right, good. All right, and then just a quick note here, I noticed that Key Cadillac has remodeled recently, and they're having their grand reopening on Thursday, September 22nd, 5 to 7:00, so for folks in the community that might be interested in that, our loan car dealer. And I think that's it for the evening, so we stand, we stand adjourned. Our triathlete is waving the flag.